All right, that's fine. So now that you're a captive audience, I'm going to begin with an ad for another event, but I'll keep it very short. The League will also offer a meeting on pros and cons, that is, for and against, on all of the state propositions. If you're mystified by some of them, you know, what is this? What does it mean? What is my vote going to do to me hereafter? What are the long and the short effects? It's very helpful. That will be October 5th of '24, from 10 to noon at the Cesar Chavez Library on Eldorado in Stockton.
There's papers there.
And I believe there is a flyer on Facebook, the League, so it's Facebook.
One here.
League of Women Voters, and there are also some there. Okay, but the advertising is over. Good evening. I'm Mary Kenefek, President of the League of Women Voters of San Joaquin County, and I want to welcome you to tonight's forum for our two candidates for the Area 3 Board of Supervisors position. Our candidates tonight are Mr. Steve DeBrum and Mr. Sunny Dollywall. The League of Women Voters was started in 1920 after women won the right to vote. However, for many years now, our organization has been open to both men and women. We are strong supporters of the election process and encourage citizens to exercise their constitutional right to vote. The League is a nonpartisan organization and does not support or oppose candidates or political parties. The purpose of this forum is to provide needed information to allow voters to make informed choices. This forum is sponsored by the League of Women Voters of San Joaquin County, and we would like to thank St. Paul's United Methodist Church for allowing us to use this fireside room for this event. We would like to thank the candidates for their willingness to participate so that voters can become better acquainted with each one of you and your perspectives on issues in our community. And we thank you, audience members, for realizing the importance of these efforts and for being with us here this evening. Tonight's questions were composed by League members and members of the community. The questions were given to the candidates-- oops, excuse me. The topics were given to the candidates one week in advance. We hope the candidates will find these-- oh, I should read my own script, which I have edited. We hope the candidates will find these questions to be challenging, enabling you, the voters, to make informed decisions about each of them. You see that campaign literature or signs are not allowed inside this room. We hope candidates have taken advantage of the tables we have set up in the hallway outside the fireside room for their materials. Voter registration forms and league information are also on the tables. Tonight's candidate forum rules call for adherence to the terms of civil discourse by both candidates and by the public. The hallmark of democracy is the willingness of all members of our community to treat each other with courtesy and respect. It is in that spirit that we are here this evening to engage in a vital part of our democratic process, a thoughtful discussion of the important issues that confront our communities. Now, I would like to introduce our moderator for the evening, League member Mary Bappa.
Thank you. Thank you, and welcome to everyone. Let me go over a few of the ground rules for the forum. As you just heard, this event is designed to give you, the audience, an opportunity to see and listen to candidates and to give the candidates fair and equal time to respond to questions. So we ask that you treat all candidates, both candidates, fairly and remain quiet and respectful through the forum. So, and in the interest of time, we're asking for no clapping, cheering, or calling after we got candidate statements or during the question and answer period. And in order to reduce distractions, we ask that you turn off or silence your cell phones and beeping watches now. I know there was no sooner than the door than my phone was ringing, so. And after the closing statements at the end, you definitely will have a chance to applaud the candidates and thank them for their time and energy. To reduce distractions, we're asking that no pictures be taken after the initial opening statements, and please, no videography. This forum is being videoed and will be available to watch in its entirety on the League of Women Voters website and Facebook page. The League will run this with no editing from beginning to end in compliance with federal election and Federal Communications Commission rules. The League is not responsible for the content of any reporting that is not arranged for or agreed to by this group. So if you see fragments or pieces of this event other than in the formal news report, you can rest assured that the League did not authorize it. Our panelists for the evening are Susie Dabaly and Mary Ann Cox from the League of Women Voters of San Joaquin County. Each candidate will have a one-minute opening statement, one and a half minutes to respond to questions from the panel, and one minute for a closing statement. The candidate listed first on the ballot will begin with opening statements, after which the order of the responders will rotate. The closing statements will be called in reverse order from the opening statements. A timekeeper will raise platforms when there is 1:30 left and stop when the speaker's time is up. Candidates, we ask you to adhere to these timeframes as much as possible. And our timer tonight is K. Y., a League member. And now for the opening statements. I'll let the candidates introduce themselves, beginning with Mr. Steve DeBrum.
I think it's on-- yes, it is. First of all, before I begin, I would like to take this opportunity to thank the League of Women Voters. Both Sunny and I went-- we talked just a minute ago, and we certainly appreciate the fact that everyone has come out for us this evening and going to listen to us. So let me begin with my opening statement. My name is Steve DeBrum. I was a retired dairy farmer in Keans County, raised on a 160-acre farm, and ultimately began my own dairy business in 1980, 1979. It was a very rewarding time in the fact that we had many things going on. So as we continue to go forward, I want to be mindful of all the support that I've got, and we certainly appreciate the fact that as we look at everything that we're going to be doing in the county, it would be very, very grateful. Thank you.
Give me a minute. I'm having a little trouble with my timing.
Yeah, because I looked at that 30 seconds, and it was there. Very, very cool. Thank you.
Give me a minute. I'm having a little trouble with my timing.
Yeah, because I looked at that 30 seconds, and it was there.
Okay. I'm not paid on my taxes. Okay. I'll try a different idea. It's stuck. So you get a minute. It's only 52 seconds.
I almost thought it was more than my minute went there.
Well, I tried to give you a little extra time, actually, because I could see that this was-- Yes.
When you're ready to start, tell them. I'm ready. Hey, Siri, give me a one-minute timer.
So we will now introduce Mr. Sunny Dollywall.
Siri, don't fail me. Siri's not-- Hey, Siri, give me a one-minute timer.
All right, I got it. Let's go.
Thank you so much. I would also like to thank League of Women Voters for giving us an opportunity to be here. I want to thank each and every one of you for being here this evening. I would also like to thank the church leadership for allowing this event, opening their doors for us. My name is Sunny Dollywall. I've been serving Lethrope since 2003. First three years as a planning commissioner, then a council member, and now this is my sixth consecutive term as mayor. I moved to the United States in 1985 with a dream, and in this country, dreams do come true. And that was the best decision I made. I had no idea that I was going to get an opportunity to serve my fellow members. I'm running for county supervisor, District 3, and I hope I can get your approval. Thank you so much. So much.
Panelists? Panelist Susie Dabaly will ask the first question that involves the topic of San Joaquin General Hospital.
We don't start until I finish talking.
All right. Okay, so the first question, we begin with Mr. DeBrum. On July 1st, 2022, the Board of Supervisors entered into an agreement with Dignity Health for management services for San Joaquin General Hospital. Do you feel this agreement has been beneficial for the hospital and the services it provides? The initial term was 18 months. And there's a second part to this question. How often do you feel this agreement should be reevaluated?
Okay. Okay. The hospital is 167 years old, and we're looking at a facility that's certainly outdated. But the things that we're going to look at in the county, previous to the contract agreement, was that the hospital was failing. And it was failing to the point that it was probably-- if it was going to receive a letter grade of been an F. Today, it's probably a B. And what's taking place when they hired Mr. Rich Castro to come on board and to be the administrator of the hospital to take a look at evaluation of a lot of things that were taking place. One of the things that ultimately took place was that not only the administrative staff, but the staff found ways to reduce the cost immensely at the hospital. It is a very rewarding opportunity that we see at the hospital and what they do. I'm very proud of them and what they've taken down the road. And when I say that, the education portion of it found two individuals, both in Ukraine and in Gazia, that were just-- just went there to serve the people of those countries from San Joaquin County. So it's a great thing. And as far as the second part of the question, it's going to be reviewed in this coming year, in 2015 and 2025, and then again, hopefully, either a three-year, five-year, or 10-year agreement.
Mr. Dollywall, would you like me to repeat the question?
Yes, please.
Okay. On July 1st, 2022, the Board of Supervisors entered into an agreement with Dignity Health for management services for San Joaquin General Hospital. Do you feel this agreement has been beneficial for the hospital and the services it provides? The initial term for the agreement was 18 months. And the second part, how often do you feel this agreement should be reevaluated?
Thank you so much. The Board of Supervisors entered into an agreement with Dignity Health for a year and a half, and now it's been extended for another year and a half. Dignity coming and taking the state of part of the hospital has helped a lot. It has streamlined the billing. It has cut down on the litigations. And I also believe that at the same time, we need to make sure, as supervisors, that the adequate staffing is there, that way our men and women can get the health care that they need and deserve. The second part about how often should it be looked at? If I get an opportunity to be there, I would like to sit down with Dignity. I would like to sit down with the staff and see how things are going, do the evaluation, get their input, and then I would make my decision and propose to my colleagues whether it should be every two years or every four years or every five years. But their input is very important, that how things are going and what kind of treatment our citizens are receiving. But talking to the staff members, talking to the doctors and nurses there, I have heard that Dignity coming in has helped a lot. Thank you. Has helped a lot. Thank you.
Okay, I have the next question. Since I was a teacher most of my life, I have a lot of voice even without mic. But we'll start this time. Mr. Dollywall, we'll start with you. The Board of Supervisors approved a $28 million upgrade at the Stockton Metropolitan Airport. These funds will be used for a variety of upgrades to the airport infrastructure. Airport Way is the main roadway to and from the airport. Currently, that road is an eyesore with trash and weeds and throughout the median strip, an unappearing approach for arriving and departing passengers from the airport. As a supervisor, how would you address and fund the current and continuing need to update, clean, and maintain the area?
I-- I had a discussion with Mr. SoCal. He's the-- Richard SoCal, he's the director of airport. Our airport-- the board has accrued $26 million for the expansion of the airport. This is already helping us a lot. 100 million ton cargo per year is being processed at the airport. And that's only one company. That's Anadon. They can land 737s. They can land 767s. But the airport needs to be expanded. It's a goldmine. It will help us a lot to reinvent this area and keep us going forward. It will help us a lot to draw prospective employers. The area around-- the area that's in the county, that needs to be addressed. And if I get there, I will make sure that that situation, like you mentioned, Dr. Cox, that it has taken care of. That way, it attracts passengers. It attracts business people, and it will help all of us, the entire county. Thank you.
Mr. DeBrum? Do you like me to repeat the question?
Please repeat the question.
The Board of Supervisors approved a $28 million upgrade to the Stockton Metropolitan Airport. These funds will be used for a variety of upgrades to the airport infrastructure. Airport Way is the main roadway to and from the airport. Currently, that approach for arriving and departing passengers includes an eyesore with trash and weeds and a median strip. As a supervisor, how would you address and fund the current and continuing need to update, clean, and maintain that area?
Very good. Great question. Ultimately, at the end of the day, we're talking about two separate issues. We're talking about $28 million for upgrades to the airport. But if we're going to-- the question deals with what are we going to do in order to appease the people as they come up? Everything that's properly clean and maintained. I'm a stickler on that, and I think that that is something that's very important. And as Mr. Dollywall has said, we have kind of the shining star there. And as we continue to grow that facility, we need to make sure, as people come in, that it is presentable, that it is something that we're going to be very proud of. And maintaining the roadways, making sure we do not have any weeds or anything like that. Because at the end of the day, as we continue to move forward, we have a real opportunity to serve about a million and a half people at that airport. We're looking at three different airlines right now. We're also looking at an international flight to be coming in. We're also looking at customs, something that we do not have here. So we're looking at all the options that are there that ultimately, we can make a difference in the things that we do in order to serve the people of San Joaquin County and the surrounding areas. And when I say the surrounding areas of about 1.5 million people, that goes all the way to Livermore and beyond. So we're looking at all the options.
The next person will come from Miss Dabaly, and will have to do with warehousing growth. And the first question will go to you, Mr. DeBrum. Warehousing growth is booming in District 3, impacting agricultural land, roadway damage from heavy trucks, air and water pollution, and traffic gridlock. What proposals will you support, require, or encourage to mitigate these impacts?
First of all, I have received the support of the Farm Bureau, and so as I continue to look at what takes place, that's on one side of the picture when you talk about mitigation of ag properties. When we look at the warehousing over the last 10 years, yes, it has expanded. But most recently, it has reduced and diminished. And some of the things that ultimately we're looking at, if you see the big Target building that is on the airport grounds-- and by the way, that airport grounds is 1,550 acres, and that Target building is just part of it-- they're having problems in order to fill that right now. And so we're looking at all the facilities, so what probably we can do. It all becomes about mitigation and what we can do with all the permitting and everything else around the county. We need to look at every option that is made available to us, whether that option is the ag land and how far out do you want to go with ag land? Because you want to protect-- you protect that most pressure product as we protect the water needs and everything and the crop production that's here in California. And so it's about working with every entity that you can, the partnership, the business partnership, and the people at the county work hand in hand in order to make that happen.
Mr. Dollywall will be in a chair. Shall I repeat it?
Yes, please.
Okay. Warehousing growth is booming in District 3, impacting agricultural land, roadway damage from heavy trucks, air and water pollution, and traffic gridlock. What proposals will you support, require, or encourage to mitigate these impacts?
Thank you so much. And that's a very important question. In Lethrope, we have attracted several businesses. They brought thousands of jobs. Tesla itself has nine warehouses. I toured one of them where the storage batteries are being built. There are 1,600 people working there from Restro, from Ripon, from Antique, Lethro, Livermore. Tesla has helped us reverse that commute. We attracted Wayfair. We brought in fines and crap, in and out. It's a balanced growth, but we've got to make sure that it doesn't affect the quality of life of our citizens. We don't want to become another Bay Area. So as a supervisor, I would encourage the cities to continue to collect the impact fee, that way we can maintain and improve our infrastructure. The citizens should not pay for what the businesses are going to create. They are coming in. They are creating jobs. But they need to pay their fair share so that we can continue to improve our infrastructure. And I would, as a supervisor, I would encourage the local governments to make sure that they continue to collect the impact fee. If you create a problem, then you must help us to mitigate. Thank you.
The next subject is jobs in the county.
This is a important but short question. So we'll start with you, Mr. Dollywall. What steps would you take to facilitate recruitment and development of good-paying jobs in our county so that people who live here-- probably people who live here who can also work here?
Thank you. Thank you. Yes, when I ran as a council member by first election, I promised to Lethropians and I would promise the same to District 3 and county at large that my goal, my dream, is that nobody should leave Lethrope for education, for jobs, for shopping. Are we there yet? We are not. We've been creating jobs. We have created thousands of jobs, like companies I mentioned before. But it also depends on the quality of life. It depends on transportation. If there's a gridlock, if our air quality goes down, we're going to be-- it's not going to be easy to attract people. They might come work here, but they might want to live somewhere else. With-- we have a planned community going there, River Island. That's out of the 15 most desirable places in the nation. Lethrope is one of them. And that's what we need to continue to do, and that's the passion, and that's the commitment I will take as a supervisor to make sure that we continue to improve the quality of life in our area. We bring more jobs. Our Jews doesn't need to leave this area. They can live and they can work here, and everybody is happy. Thank you.
Please, please repeat the question.
What steps would you take to facilitate recruitment and development of good-paying jobs in our county so that people who live here can work here?
Great question. So the job side of it, and bringing jobs and job procurement or businesses to the county all begins with a partnership. And from the partnership, then that steps down to the county, and the county is working with another group as far as the jobs. What we really need to find out, as Mr. Dollywall had indicated, is to keep the people on this side of the hill on a daily basis. When you have more than 80,000 people traveling every, each and every day, going over the Altamont, that are coming from San Joaquin, Stanislas, and Resent Counties and up in the hills, you know, that is a lot of people. So I have always felt that we need to find ways that we can keep jobs here. I will work diligently with the people of the county in order to not only bring jobs, good-paying jobs, to our county, good-paying jobs to our county, but also bring businesses that ultimately, people want to stay here within the county. And I think that is a very important job. But it's everyone working together, as we continue to say. So, when you're at the Board of Supervisors, you've got five people, you've got to get three other people that's going to see your way, as just like if the city council may add the decision that you make, that you're moving in that proper direction to get it going. But it's going to take a lot of work by a lot of people to make it all happen.
Our next topic is homelessness.
Mr. Dubron will be the first to respond. The Board of Supervisors wield significant authority over funding for homeless services and projects. What policies will you propose to target the economic drivers of homelessness? And how will you ensure those policies are effective?
First of all, homelessness is a very, very important issue. If it was something easy, the problem would have already been taken care of. When we continue to look at what the county is doing today with their SJ cares, they're working with the probation department at the sheriff's department, they've got five individuals that's working there, they've got an individual working in mental health, and they've got another person that's established and working towards, working towards the root cause. One of the things I've always felt that ultimately, we need to be a driving force is mental health. And we have, either the individuals are, you know, drinking, or it's drugs, or it's mental health issues. So those are the issues that we are going to have to take some very hard looks at, and how we continue to work at things. It all begins with working with people in Sacramento. And ultimately, that's the thing that I am going to be a driving force for, because that's something that I believe in. And as we continue and move forward, it's going to take everyone, you know, building the village, that's going to work hand in hand in order to get things done. And it's not going to happen overnight, and it's going to take a while. But it's going to take a good while in order to get things. But if all five people were working together like they are right today at the county level, things are starting to move in the right direction with the SJ cares program.
Mr. Dollywalt, I'll repeat the question for you. The Board of Supervisors wield significant authority over funding for homeless services and projects. What policies will you propose to target the economic drivers of homelessness? And how will you ensure those policies are effective?
Thank you. It's a very important issue, and it's a very complex issue. I believe there are three types of homeless individuals. There are people who are down on their luck, something happened in their personal life, either a divorce, or a job loss, or maybe a health issue. Those can be easily had. The other two categories are mental illness and substance abuse. And it's going to take three things. It's going to take jobs, it's going to take affordable housing, and it's going to take treatment. There are some people, they don't even know that they need help. SJ Care, they go and they try to talk to them, and some of them are saying, "Stay away from us." I discussed this situation with Steve Jackson, he's the head for probation. There are five people from probation, there are three for mental health. But there are some people, they don't want to be in the shelters. Lowdy, Gracey, Manteca, they have, Manteca has built Navigation Center. And as a supervisor, I'll make sure that it succeeds. We cannot afford Navigation Center failing. It must continue to help our homeless population. And at the same time, we need to have more programs, especially for mental illness and substance abuse. Those people, they refuse help. Thank you.
Our next topic is free and fair elections area.
Mr. Dollywalt, free and fair elections are a cornerstone of our democracy. How would you strengthen access to voting in San Joaquin County?
The registrar of voters, they are doing a very good job. Our sheriff's department is doing a good job, they are helping. There are drop boxes at several locations, depending on the size of the city. There's the one in, the two in Lethro we had before the primary, there are camera systems that nobody does anything illegal or unlawful. People feel comfortable that, I toured several polling stations, I didn't see any intimidation, people were exercising their democratic right, and there was no disturbance, there was nothing. And I believe that our elections are fair and free. But if there's any issue, then the law enforcement will address it, and the registrar of voters, they will also address this issue, getting help from a local law enforcement agency. They also, the registrar of voters, they make sure that every signature is verified. That's why they have 30 days to certify the election. Personally, I believe that our elections are free and fair. Thank you.
Mr. Dubron? Free and fair elections are a cornerstone of our democracy. How will you strengthen access to voting in San Joaquin County?
Great question. You know, if you have a free election that allows an individual to vote for the person they wish to vote for, if you have a free election, it's going to be an individual that works as part of democracy and moving in the right direction. Ultimately, at the end of the day, I think it all comes down to education. If, everything that we've looked at, or we've heard about, you know, we've heard about the issues that have been dealt with at the county level, the issue in Lowdy with one of their council members, the appropriate action was taken at the registrar voter's office, along with the sheriff and the DA's office. They made the correct actions as they moved forward on the process. Really, at the end of the day, being educated, and if you have a real concern, as I did a few days ago, I went and visited the ROV office. I went through and toured the entire facility. I asked the questions, and I think that it opened up your eyes, that every individual had the opportunity to be free and fair. And as with Mr. Dollywalt, I also agree that we have a system that is free and fair. Is it 100%? No, no matter what you do, you're not going to make everyone happy. As Mr. Dollywalt knows, sitting in the diocese, he does not make 100% of the people happy. And, right? It's 50/50. You might take that to the ranch.
I think we have time for a couple more questions, if you're all enjoying what we're hearing. The next topic is county fiscal health.
Mr. Dubron will be the first to respond. Our county is relatively fiscally healthy. We are not in a budget deficit, and our credit rating was recently upgraded. As a supervisor, how would you maintain our county's solvency while still meeting the county's often expensive needs?
Great question. For 11 years now, the county Board of Supervisors has a structurally sound, structurally budget. What is very important is that the people are working together. If there are questions to be asked, you need to ask the questions. If there are things that you don't believe in, you better be asking the proper questions, and go into whichever department requires the dedication and that you're going to move on. As we continue to work forward, as we continue to move forward, I think what's ultimately, as I indicated, 11 years of positive growth, we're at $28 billion with the $2.8 billion budget with adequate funding. We've got sufficient amount of funds that are in reserves. They've done an excellent job as we continue to grow. They've got 34 projects that they're working on in the county today. They're doing a lot of positive things. And as a sitting supervisor, I will, I won't be working on behalf of the people of San Joaquin County. It's just not the people in District 3, it's the other 600,000 people that are sitting out there in the countryside, and then the cities of Stockton, Manteca, Lethro, Lowdy, and so on. So, I believe that was it. I think that was going to come up.
Okay, and to repeat the question for Mr. Dollywalt. Our county is relatively fiscally healthy. We are not in a budget deficit, and our credit rating was recently upgraded. As a supervisor, how would you maintain our county's solvency while still meeting the county's often expensive needs?
Thank you. Like you said, the county is fiscally healthy, $2.8 billion budget with almost half a million reserves. But we need to keep an eye on how we do in the future, how our revenue stream is going to be, how our expenses are going to be. As a supervisor, I'll make sure that we continue to provide the services that our citizens need and deserve, that we, our employees get fair contracts, that we continue to attract businesses, that way our revenue stream can, we can sustain it, or we can increase it. Money makes the world go around. We need revenues, but at the same time, we have to be very careful that we always spend the hard-earned money that we collect from our taxpayers. Thank you.
Go ahead and ask the question. Next topic is affordable housing. This is the final topic before closing statements.
The first mic didn't work, Kate, so I think it was waiting for you.
Yeah, okay, good. We're almost there. Go ahead.
San Joaquin County, Mr. Dollywalt. San Joaquin County is growing, and much of its expansion can be seen in Lethro, Manteca, and other locations in Area 3. Residents are concerned about increasingly unaffordable housing. As a supervisor, what policies would you suggest to address this in Area 3 and across the entire county?
Thank you. Thank you. We, I do agree with you, Dr. Potts, we have that problem. But I think that larger houses that, you know, that we are seeing, 4,000 square foot, 5,000 square foot, someday, that's when we think of the best. I think we can start going up, multi-family units. In the city of Lethro, we are also issuing permits for ADUs. We are renewing apartments, not only building houses. But if, that's the direction we need to keep going, continue to build high-density homes, that way, you know, our coming generation, the younger generations who are coming out of colleges are pretty soon going to be coming out of colleges, they can afford and stay in our county instead of moving to other states or elsewhere in the state. That's very important. Also, we need to have a partnership, public-private partnership, where we can get some subsidies and build housing, and affordable housing for our seniors.
So, Mr. Dubron? San Joaquin County is growing, and much of that expansion can be seen in Lethro, Manteca, and other locations in Area 3. Residents are concerned about increasingly unaffordable, unaffordable housing. As a supervisor, what policies would you suggest to address this in Area 3 and across the entire county?
That's a wonderful question. That's something that's been talked about for a long, long time, affordability. What is affordable to me may not be affordable to you. And as we continue to look what's taking place in the county, I can tell you that the Board of Supervisors is going to be looking at an issue here, just coming up in the next few weeks probably, that are looking at affordable housing. And that affordable housing is with manufactured facilities, manufactured homes, that they will be looking at. I think that that is something that we certainly now have to do, and looking at the, you know, the permitting process and every other aspect of it that needs to be looked at. The important thing is, is where is the property and the land going to come from? I have had some recent conversations with people who are in the business and are looking at opportunities of building homes. So are there infill projects that we can build homes into that would put houses that's going to be affordable to a lot of people? That we're going to have places for workforce housing? I talked to one gentleman, he goes, hey, he says they can put some affordable housing right on the other side of the freeway. So those are things that we certainly need to look at, and as we continue to look forward. In order to stay away from looking at market rate houses, it's going to be very, very tough for anybody to buy.
Now is the time for our closing statements. Am I sitting on it? It's time for closing statements for the gentlemen to give us a summation of where they stand and their points of various issues. And Mr. Dollywalt, you will go first this time.
Excuse me. We have one minute for that? Yes.
Yes.
Interim.
Thank you. I would like to say that I
Short and sweet.
Thank you. I would like to say that I've been, you know, I've been enjoying this campaign. You have two candidates who respect each other. We've been friends, we are friends, we always going to be friends, no matter what the outcome. I've been something Lethro for almost 22 years, sixth term as mayor. I'm so blessed to have this opportunity, that I, you know, that I got a chance to serve my fellow Americans. And I'm very passionate about serving, I'm very accessible, that's why the people in Lethro keep electing me, term after term after term. It's hard to win one term, this is my sixth consecutive, and that's the promise that I make to people in District 3, that I will serve District 3 with the same passion that I've been serving Lethro since 2003. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Tell me when you're ready.
I'm ready.
I don't want to get cut short this time. So as I indicated early, I was a dairy farmer, a mayor, an individual who was a volunteer, committed to our community. I certainly believe that I am the best qualified candidate that you're looking at. Good friend of mine, but as we continue to look forward, what's going to happen? All of this has gave me the support from Sheriff Withrow, the Deputy Sheriff's Association, POR Act Corrections, Probation, Stockton Police Officers Association, Manteca POA, all of the places out there, including the Farm Bureau. So I only, not only have the people, the public safety, I also have the farming community that's behind me and supporting me through this entire race. We continue to go forward, it's going to be a very exciting day, and we're not watching, it's only like 44 days left, but it's going to be a very rewarding time as we continue to go forward. Thank you very much for coming out. I appreciate your vote as we move forward in this campaign.
Please give our candidates a round of applause. And we thank you, candidates, panelists, timers, and audience members. This concludes our candidate forum for Area 3 Board of Supervisors, and we are so grateful for your interest and support, and very happy that the community is as caring and interested in our growth as you are. So thank you very much.
Thank you.